If you believe me, I should be there. But we are failed here. Mama, we want to give you a report. That we also have a father that is capable. A father. Okay.
Sorry, excuse me, we just missed out one very important person. The best of the best in the entourage of our excellency. Mrs. Abosedi Adyobayo.
Adyobaye.
I, 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 I don't know, sorry. It's also another problem.
So like I was saying before, we have a father that is capable, that is very much ready to listen to our women and to also take into our women. And of course, that has given us that... That now led us to have a wonderful man to lead us in the contest from March 11. Eliloum. Remember that person that sa honorable that Allah he think that I gave you to the man of the mind. The man of the mind. This man has been brought back for the world. You can see how our experience and the customer, people. You can see how our people are, you know, I do not understand what you mean. The car that you do, the body, the mother, the mother, the child, the youth, the child, the child. All of our businesses, you know, what I mean by that. This is the man of the business. Say, Abo. Say, Abo. Say, Abo. I want to remind you that I speak. I think that we stand on our own.
Yeah, 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 my people, they got the money. They are here.
Yeah, 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 my people, they got the money. They are here. Yeah, 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 my people, they got the money. They are here. We do not do that. We come in our country, our children. They do it. We do not do that. We come in our country, our children. They do it. Yeah, 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 my people, they got the money. They are here. They got the money, so they are here. Oh, so they are here. Oh, so they are here. We come in our country, we come in our country. We come in our country, so we are here. We are the people. They got the money, they got the money. They got the money, they got the money. We do not do that, they got the money. We do not do that, they got the money. You do it, you do it. I do it, you do it. I'm a farmer, I'm a farmer, I'm a farmer. You do it, you do it. I do it, you do it. I'm a farmer, I'm a farmer, I'm a farmer. They are here, they are here, they are here. They are here, they are here, they are here. They are here, they are here, they are here. My wife is human, she is so. My mother, she is so. I love her, she is so. They are here, they are here, they are here. My wife is human, she is so. My mother, she is so. I love her, she is so. We do not do that, they are here. My mother, she is so. We do not do that, they are here. My mother, she is so. They are here, they are here. We come in our country, we come in our country. They are here, they are here. We come in our country, we come in our country. I love her, she is so. I love her, she is so. I love her, she is so. I, I love her, she is so. 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 I love her, she is so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, please, just your nice words again. Mama, this is our weekend of Ouspa. We want to say welcome to Ouspa. Thank you God bless you for telling. I must point out, I would like to invite the state chairman of PDP. Under the doctor's signature of Budalee to introduce the welcome I present. Thank you very much. PDP. PDP. Father Une. Father Ujili. Father Uma Ma. Father Uma Ma Asenku. Greatest and the greatest and the greatest Nigeria women. Articulate that they are women. Ever cautious that they are women. Don't make that young that they are women. Articulate the value that they are women. I wish to be like Mr. Eto'o in Nigeria, we still like our women. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Let him go back to keep your own. Okay, Mama Wa. Mama Dada. Anima.
Mama ra tomo iyo mo.
Anima Mako.
Mama ra tomo iyo mo.
Opinashere.
Mama ra tomo iyo mo.
One shit, two.
Mama ra tomo iyo mo.
Do, do, do. Okay, Mama Dada. The most sophisticated. Okay, there, Mama.
Odo ye ekba.
Ahn? He is that, ahn? There, Mama. Okay. Yeah, yeah, that is butu. Okay, yeah, yeah. There, that is butu, Dada. Everybody, the honorable that is butu, do want to hear again. Yeah, yeah, make that is butu, do I? I say, okay. I want to say, do I want to be. No, but. Okay, I want to. I want, Mama Wa Wa. I extend all policies to the entourage. No, but, thank you, Lord. What the honorable that is butu. Say, Lado. Say, Lado. Mama, so I want to be honorable that is butu. Oh, so PDP, do butu. There, yeah, you may talk. Our honorable that is butu, I want to PDP. The reason why, so we pray, oh, so opposition. Oh, yes, for support, our honorable that is butu. Oh, but, but, oh, who can land, do I have a day? Oh, I get on the bed, on the bed. You must have, she is like, she is there, that are right. Oh, but, I want to be. I observe the minister's. Oh, Mama Wa, I do butu, do I show love there? There, are right. Ever, I'm bad, brother.
Ni oru pa jesu. Abawa, tirola wa. I do pray, who are you target that? I do pray, to live here, I want to let Mama Wa, we share to one. I do pray, me, they say, I am one. I do pray, to live one morning, one by any. And what, 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 what? I think, oh, oh, it's really, I do butu, they, you know, whatever, what, what? Ever, what, what, what? Ever, what, what? Ever, what, you, me, children? This is like, I love my enemy. Ever, what, say Mama, what, say, I bet, I mean. This is like, I love my enemy. Yes, you, I want to.
Do, do, do. I do that, do. Once again, I want to officially welcome the incoming first lady in Nigeria to Oouspa. Like I said earlier, Oouspa is known to be the most sophisticated state, the most standing state in Nigeria. And very glorious when it comes to loyalty. Greater, greater as Nigeria women. Greater as Nigeria women. We are more. I conquer the Nigeria, my first lady, Oouspa. Really, I mean, if I go, we pray, I do put it one day. Yoba, first lady, Yoba, Nia Suro. I conquer the Yoba, my first lady, Nia Suro. I want to add, Odo ye ekba, Odo ye ekba, Tura. Eh, eh, I am Mama Wa.
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 Eh, eh, I am Iri.
Eh, eh, I am Iri.
Do, do, do. Mama. I give support. By extension, I extend the greetings to the entire entourage. They are far from, eh, you regret, eh, what's up? Oh, okay, that, to do, the data. Only for surprise result, that my poor, that Oouspa. Dear Nigeria. Mama, we are going to deliver Oouspa. Oouspa people are tired of APCs at the station. They are the station that is known to be a confused at the station. Oh, no, no, no. Oh, no, oh, go, I want you. Active, yes, it's for you. We need not to go to the market places to tell them the prices of a station or what it is. We need not to go and tell the market women what they are going to their various market places. Very long, then, you want, you get to walk back home. I want to know why you want supper. Yeah, far along, Mama Wa, no, we do, you know. Baba Wa, I think, I go back, I want, we do, I know. Eh, oh, oh, you, you go, you go. I can, a car, oh, you, Oouspa. Far along. Tomorrow, May 29, we shall all be alive to the praise. The story of the success of Adivu Abubaka. May 29, we shall all be alive to witness the ceremony of our honorable that is butu, Adivu Abubaka. Ah, the China song. Hey, Mama, they want to, they are far along, but, but, I don't want to do it. They are far along, I want to, I want, eh, she, she. They, Mama, they want, along, go, 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 eh, eh. I know, too, you know. I know, I know. They, 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 I don't want to do it. Oh, yeah, Baba Wa, I think, that is what I do, I do. Oh, yeah, Mama Wa, I think, that is what I do, I do. They are far along, I want to, I want to. Do, do, do. Thank you very much, our chairman. We going, I'm a set, Mama Wa, no, I want, I want to. Who is the coordinator of this program? He want for me, open remarks, may, you should know, maybe.
PDP. PDP. I want to, oh, oh. I do belong to, I do come with your shape. I want to especially welcome her excellency. Our dear巴拉, Hadiya, Titi, Amina, Adivu, our incoming Mama. Eh, the first, first lady of the federal office of Nigeria. Day 29, 2023. Our incoming first lady, Erelu, I'm ready, I'm ready to. I also welcome all various groups at today's PDP town planning meeting with our Mama, all other protocol, Julie, Ouspa. Share, Mama Wa, Hadiya, Titi, Adivu. Our name, Ata Teru, I want to be. What you want, it's, ni, I'm far along, long. Ni, I'm far along, long.
What you want, she might be a woman. Tori we pay, he loo wa, live a bacteria, he do local, he talk here local government. I am from that place. Hey, my children, I'm from there. Mama is also from there. He have not come here to local, he part of area, I'm from here. I love both who I'm a mama father. Oh, the more I go there, it's three hundred and fifty per liter. Hey, Joma, I love how I share my people. I share my power, I deliver, I conquer, I'm from here. Let's go all over the world. Here in the world. Uh, May twenty nine, oh, you popo I'm a guy. Oh, they're my girl, no look what about, I'm a, I'm here, minimum, just two, oh, you are one. Thank you so much, thank you so much, I'm a little bit tired, I'm a little bit tired. Your excellency, have we put quickly a call you that we have various women groups here? See, we will be tonight, yeah, your mother, the lady. So, no, we're mad at Danny. Do you want to show us, go on, show them, let it do both, let it do it both. Enjoy the first, your mother first lady, she am a name in Nigeria. There now, we don't go. We have our party women here. PDP. We have women of integrity. Please, enjoy come here, we international, we're looking for you. We have Ladoja, my sister, enjoy my girl, you're my sister. We have no flag. Listen, are there anything you need? I'm going to. Please, we have your dress house association. We have tailor association. We have the plant sellers. We have the day alone. We have the day alone there. Make up artists. We have the new pastors. We have our solitudes. Our people, non-indigenous. We have pastors' wives. We have the elders, yeah. Eh, the elder. Abajeri. We have Philippine Women Parliament here. Ladojati put teachers. Ladojati put teachers. We have Ladojats, we have Articul women of hope. Woman, woman and youth humanity, Articul daughters of doctors and sons. We have Articul sunshine sisters, female students representatives, they are also here. We have labor union, labor union are here, we can see them all over there. We have female chiefs, good women in governance, are we there? We can see them over there. We have PLWD, they are also here. Ladoj movement, Ladoj gang guard. We have members of the PCC, we have women real back. Into Rade, Lado, Akela, they group. We have articulated group. Alessa, large and now. They are also here, they also said, they have them here. We have labor union, we have mentioned them, and so many other friends of Mama Articul, they are here, ma. Enjoy a part of four hour. Ma, all these groups, all these women we have mentioned, they have been coordinated with law, unity, which has given us the peace we enjoy in the Ogun State PDP. Under the coordination's permission of Mama Wa, JJ, Erelu, Ademike, Adebutu. Eh, bad the part, they were for. Maybe, DJ one minute. Maybe, I'm a begging Mama Wa, he had a make a come by us all. He want keep Mama Wa card, he was so bad, I'll change, she in there, he want to do, he want to jump out of us all. Me, Eru, Paul, I'm a wild man, Mama, I don't think I do but do. PDP. PDP are we. PDP are we. Oh, the we. Oh, so the we. Oh, the we there. Say, Articul. You stay unifier. Say, Articul. Say, Lado. It's Rade, back, Coco, wow. I want to specially welcome our Mama. Our great father. It's exactly four years ago you were here. We thank God for your life, ma. Yeah, it's poisonous. Look, but yes, so I'm a really bow. Mofekki, Coco, and when Tora, Jwan, thank you so much for being so special to Mama. And by the grace of God, come this year, May twenty nine, we all shall have cause to glorify God. I want to thank our chairman, our maybe chairman, Chairman New Awobiri. Chairman, thank you very much. Eh, she, Adupe, eh, our human leader, the, I mean, the federal human leader, PDP human leader. Thank you for coming, ma. Eh, we thank, this, this is about the first thing, you're coming to Ogun State, I think. You mean, yes, really, thank you, thank you for coming. I want to thank our leaders, Awon, Ababa, Obirin, eh, she, Movi, Mommy Wa, the state human leader, Movi Ki. Oh, Awon, Abai, Ben, for the effect, especially, Awon, Yalodja, Awon, Yada, Da, eh, she, Adupe. And I can see our mommy, Mrs. Labashoda. Oh, sorry, I think it's a mistake, uh, identity. Anyway, we thank everybody for coming. For the Pella, Olawa, Awon, Ben, Ben, eh, she, but he, 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 time, that we are short. Tori, I know, I should say, he, she must be there, be there, eh, Jwa, he no me to go on it. Tori, Mama, we pay, if ever, I like you, I, if ever, to call you, eh, she, like, but, oh, Lord, I want more to, I know, I show you, Rayo. Like, you, I want more, want the president, want the governor, want the senator, he go, 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 to that, to that, like, you, like, but, oh, Lord. I fight, I for one, so, yeah, Lord, I want more, I see, Rayo, eh, she, for the P, oh. For, for the P, he might have give, he might, he, why, eh, I, if I, I, I was, so, to, to, she, my, eh, to, to, you, he, 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 or, I'm, I, she, my, Jibou. Tori, my, she, for, to, eh, ta, va, di, bu, ta, we, you, to, I, le, ta, to, I, look, I, look, I, look, Jibou. She, he, eh, no, he, he, eh, I want, I like, eh, she, oh.
Suke tia wa, baso zwa amakanata sapo de iya ayemba kudiya ahunusu. Chiya ta, daa ya yezuwa de ta imakozak e ma hiruwa inayara. Da mu mata, marasa amiti, da mu ya ya mara itaima tambaya na kena. Ah, that's my dear.
Thank you very much. DJ. DJ, 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 DJ. DJ, thank you. Ma, with your permission, I have the physical challenge people. They really want to talk to you, ma. I hope you can give them one minute.
This is Channels Television. What you're watching is a town hall meeting organized by the wife of the PDP presidential candidate, Mrs. Atiku Abubaka, in Abioguta, the Ogun State capital. A meeting organized to meet women groups in Ogun State. As you can see, the hall filled with capacity with women from various groups in Ogun State, including traders from various sections, market women, religious leaders, you know, women in religious organizations, as well as labor unions. All packed at the Obasidjo Library in Abioguta, the Ogun State capital, for this, what they term as an all-important meeting with Mrs. Titi Abubaka. Of course, some of those who grace this occasion as well is the PDP chairman in Ogun State, Sekuru Lai Ogundele, who had spoken earlier appreciating the visit of Mrs. Abubaka to the state for this meeting with the women. Also, the wife of the PDP governorship candidate in Ogun State, Mrs. Adimeke Adebutu has also addressed the crowd. She also thanked Mrs. Abubaka for coming to Ogun State to meet with the women. And she has assured the women that all their, anything that they have, all their requests will be taken up and looked into. The governorship candidate there himself is not available. He's absent, and he's represented there by his wife. Some of the contributions from the women in this meeting include their appreciation of Mrs. Abubaka for meeting with them. And they also laid bare their minds on various issues, including welfare for the elderly, the workers' union. Recently, just a few minutes ago, you heard the leader of the labor group speaking on the need to increase the living wage and not minimum wage from the 30,000 naira.
Our incoming first lady, God's willing. Okay, sorry. Her excellency, Hajiya Amina Titi Atiku Abubaka. Her excellency, your incoming first lady in Ogun State, by the special mercy and grace of God, Mrs. Adebutu. Our dear chairman, the gentleman in the midst of the beautiful women here. We recognize you, we appreciate you. Distinguished ladies on the high table, please, you are highly respected. Our beautifully attired women of Ogun State. You are beautiful. You are wonderful. You are specially created by God. Otherwise, if you are not special, how would we arrive here to see this array of beauty? This array of God's creation, wonderful women. I appreciate you. And I want to tell you that Mama Titi loves all of you. She loves you. Even as we were coming, when we finished in Ibadan yesterday, she was itching to come down to Ogun State. I saw her body language, and I decided to follow her. So let us appreciate her for coming. And I appreciate all of you. When we entered this hall mesmerized, all of you know what they write. So you both. Hello? Hello? We are carried away because when we came in, we saw this crowd. It is very impressive. Ogun State women, you have done well. And I believe you will do much more, better. Because from what I have seen here, I don't think we will talk much. I have seen that you all are ready to support PDP. You are ready to work with PDP. And how do you do that? First of all, let us reflect backwards and reflect to the present. When PDP was in government, you all saw how the economy was. How much were we buying a bag of rice? 7,000 naira. Even in some places, 6,000 naira. How much are you buying rice today? Ah, ah, you people define here, maybe because in the box. I am from First River State. In Kalaba, we buy it 50,000 a bag of rice. Do you want to continue that way? Look at when our children were thrown out of school by Asu strike. What happened? Yes, there was Asu strike when PDP was in government, but it did not last two weeks. But when we got into APC government, what happened? Our children stayed at home for eight months. Do you want that to continue? Oh, why I'm bringing all this is because we are all mothers. We are mothers. We don't want our children to stay at home. We don't want to be buying a bag of rice at 50,000 naira. We don't want to continue with this kind of government. This government is an aberration. This government has to be kicked out, not by us alone, but by the power of God. But we have to help God. God uses people to work. So God will use us to remove this bad government. And how do we do it? We cannot remove this government by sleeping at home. We can only do this by going to get our PVCs. And listen to me, there is this new electoral act. It is not the kind of voting we used to do. In those days, we used to carry ballot boxes. People would carry ballot boxes and run away into the bush to come print. You cannot come print now. So all the, all votes is very important. Go and get your PVCs. And when you get your PVCs, please don't keep them in your drawer. Don't keep them in your wardrobe. On that day, 25th of February, please, open your drawer, open your wardrobe. Get your PVC out. Call your husbands, call your children, call your neighbors. Don't go alone, oh. Call your housemates, call your housekeepers, call your cook, call everybody around you. Call your drivers to follow you to go and vote for PDP. And when you go to vote, you are voting on the 25th. You are voting for our candidate, Alaji Atiku Abubaka and his wife. That is the day you are voting for them, 25th, eh, 25th February. And you are also voting for senators and for House of Reds candidate on the 25th. Then, on the 11th of March, you are voting for governorship and State House of Assembly. So please, when you get to the polling unit, what I'm trying to do is give you a little bit of voters' education. Because if you don't have voters' education, we will lose our votes. When you get to the polling unit, please listen. When you get to the polling unit, don't waste your time too much looking for Atiku Abubaka. Just look for umbrella. Have you heard? Look for umbrella. Just go. Wherever you see umbrella, you come print. And please, when you are come printing, you, you put your thumb at the middle so that... You put your thumb. Eh, this one, have you seen my finger? Yes. Eh, you use this one so that you don't, you, you, you place your thumb, your finger at the middle. So that the ink does not go left or right at the middle. So I know that you will all do this. So please, vote for the umbrella. God bless you all in Jesus' name.
Thank you, DJ, please, thank you. N'bae, n'bae, eh, women in politics, eh, n'bae man sorro. Ash man sorro. Eh, da kima mabaa man sorro, no? N'baa man sorro. Maba manzoro, and baosrejo. Eh, as per one, voting your eh, jo. Eh, you don't know siwa eh, jo. Eh, eh, come one minute, ni ma. Women in politics, one person, one minute. PDP. 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 Eh, da kima maba, god damn one, oh, beer eh, yeah. Some bad, bad, some bad damn, beer eh, yeah, to, awan sorrow. Mami gives up for you, eh, 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 eh. Eh, ah, what, eh, 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 eh. Ah, what, eh, eh, eh.
Please wait. Our women leaders, eh, one per fifty persons is one. You may ignore the comment. Wait, eh, you know, of which you are recognized by calling party women. You are the party women. The women leaders see like a shit today. So please, party women, please get up and greet Mama. All the women leaders, please get up and greet Mama. Che, che, my eh, eh, one, che, my eh, eh, media, awan be. Eh, all right, do, do, no. All of them that is in this attire that I put on, they are the women leaders of their various local governments and wars. They hold the party in their various local governments and wars. So I appreciate your differences. Eh, no joke, eh, 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 eh. Eh, ma be, no? Eh, ma be, there are women in politics is also here. I want not to watch, not to complain, eh, it's not no mission. Eh, ma be, no?
Thank you very much. Nitahe, Amater Kimanawa, the wife of the presidential candidate of PDP. She is the founder of Women Trafficking and Child Labor Eradication Foundation, eh, ba, eh, ba, eh, working law. She presented a private bill to the National Assembly, which gave back to a government agency called Napte, where her husband was the vice president to President Aba Sanjo. Please, put your hands together for her. Now, Mama Jethon, let's support eh, Baba Wani, 2023. She has initiated a program called SHE and according for security, health, and education. And this is the reason Sima Mashe, your leader in Ogun State, that's bad when you want sorrow. Eh, jo, eh, we are the one label eh, eh. Eh, ba wa, ba, the rock eh, 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 eh. Mama wa, mama lo, eh, eh. Mama lo, eh, 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 eh. PDP.
Step it down, step it down. Our incoming... Please be seated, be seated. Our incoming First Lady of Ogun State, by the grace of God, March, come March 20... Eh, come March 11. That is when the election is going to hold. Our indefated, eh, boom. Defated, eh, eh, Chairman, I greet you. The national woman leader of our party, all our ladies, our mamas on the high table, all our ladies, our mamas, on the other side of the table. Mi o, best share eh, ni konkon. So that is why, dimo she saw eh, eh, all other persons on the other side of the table. Mo ki bo bo, eh, 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 eh. Share na, be, eh, ni mo ba eh, eh. Share, eh, 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 eh. All the da da. PDP. PDP. Power to the women. Power to the men. Power to the youth. Sharei Mama Wa, Mrs. Adebutu, eh, 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 eh. I don't know the phone, eh. And when you want to saw eh, 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 in a battle, ke, eh, 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 Mama to one, eh, 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 oni suhulu ni. Oni suhulu, no, no, joba da, eh, eh. Eh. Mrs. Adebutu, on ba wa da le ju. Eh, you know, eh, you know, ba wa da le ju. No, eh, 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 eh. 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 Mo ni, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Shubba, eh, 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 eh. 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 Mo ki eh, 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 eh. Eh, jo, eh, 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 eh. Eh, don't wa, eh, 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 eh. Eh, don't wa, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Eh, no mi tu, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Shubba, eh, 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 eh. Shubba, eh, 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 eh. Shubba, eh, 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 eh. 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 Sharei bo bo, eh, 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 eh. 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 Sharei, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Eh, ma, eh, ma be, no see me. Eh, 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 eh. Sharei bo bo, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Sharei, eh, 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 eh. 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 Sharei bo bo, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh.[1179.28]